2019, it is 7:45 PM. Mr. Metrick, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Weisberg, Ms. Rickards, Pam Anopoulos, Mr. Nixon, Mr. McGreevy.
Here.
Vice President Teblin Moffett.
Present.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
President Muir.
Here.
All right, I have no comments. Ms. Mayor?
Just a few comments today. Happy Spring, everybody. It's a beautiful day out there. I just want to remind everybody with Spring, we have some growing plants and growing things which are wonderful in the borough. What they're not great is when they grow over the sidewalks. So I'm going to ask residents to please trim your hedges back, make sure your weeds and everything are not blocking the sidewalk, your plants, and make sure there's clear path for people to cross through, pedestrians, cyclists, or anybody coming through. Also, cut your hedges back so that people can see at corners to make sure that visibility for cars approaching intersections is nice and clear. So just a reminder to please do that. I just also want to say thank you to Ed Harmon. He's been doing a lot of, you'll see a lot of work on crosswalks in the borough. And the borough is getting really spruced up and looking really great. Saying a nice thank you to Ed Harmon for his hard work and doing what he's doing to make our borough the best it can be. And that will be it.
Thank you very much. We now have a presentation regarding the mural on the municipal parking lot. Mr. Stern, welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, so as we left off, we initially discussed the mural I talked about. So since then, I have completed the color design. Andrew, would you like to see?
Sure.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. Thank you. You can turn it back, please.
Yeah, all right. So this meeting will, or this presentation will primarily be to discuss funding. So I've brought with me a comprehensive list of the funds needed for the production of this mural. So, off the paper. All right, so I will be using a limited amount of colors to, red, white, and blue, ah, sorry, red, yellow, blue, white, in order both to save costs and because that's how I painted this. And it will be exterior grade latex paint. And this is the bulk of the cost. It will be approximately $330 each for a gallon. This is very conservative. There shouldn't be any additional paint costs needed just because each of these paints could cover the wall and clearly I'm going to be using a mixture of them. So even with multiple layers, it's unlikely that they would run out. Additionally, they have pretty good life fastness. So despite their price, they will be sustainable. They will last long. And then in addition, I will need to prime the surface of the masonry that I am painting on. That will additionally be around $94, $100, taking into account shipping. This is necessary for the colors not to bleed through the masonry. Very self-explanatory. So, and then after the production of the painting is done, I will be laying in a varnish. And this will protect, it'll protect the painting from degradation from environmental effects. And it will also provide a layer of protection to the wall. So there are two pieces to this, an isolation coat, which essentially means that if the need ever arises, the varnish is removable, and the varnish itself. So these in total are another $100. Then we have the tools cost, brushes, rollers, any additional like coverings, tarps, whatever, will come in at approximately $50. And then finally, I would like $80 of discretionary funding in case the need arises for any unforeseen expenses. So in total, this equals approximately $650. And I do recognize that the borough might not be able to provide all of this, but I would request at least partial funding with the rest being made through crowdfunding methods.
Well, Mr. Stern, I can tell you that council members have discussed this individually over the past week. And while the borough will not be able to provide funding for your project, a private citizen has stepped forward to fully fund your project.
Okay.
So I think you could. This individual was very much moved by your dedication to the arts, your dedication to giving back to your community and beautification, and they wanted very strongly to see this happen.
That's amazing.
So it sounds like it is going to happen with your masterful execution.
All right, awesome.
It's beautiful, Albert.
May I know the name of the?
You may not. And we will make arrangements for you to get your funds to purchase supplies. But yeah, that's how anonymous donation works.
Okay, that's fair.
It's probably not who you think, so just don't even waste your time thinking.
You'll never guess.
Patron of the earth.
And you can work with the Borough Office in regards to, you know, specing out the site and preparation and timing and all those logistics.
Okay, well, to whoever my mystery donor was, I thank you very much.
Nice to be all.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to 5B, Preliminary Land Development Plan for 114 Forest. Mr. Metrick, I'll let you call the experts as you see fit.
Sure, we have the applicants for 114 Forest Avenue here this evening that'll be ready to give us a presentation of the preliminary plan as it stands today with revisions from March. The Borough Engineer is here as well, who's completed a review. The planned project has been to the Planning Commission. They have heard your presentation. We don't have their review letter yet, but we do have review letters provided to us by the zoning officer, the Borough Engineer. And we're at a moment tonight where we can listen to the project plan presentation, and council can take and ask questions of the applicant, and the engineer can help respond to those questions. And council does not need to take any action at tonight's meeting, but we will have this on our agenda at the Wednesday, April 17 meeting as an action item for consideration.
Okay. All right, Mr. Fromholme?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm just going to press you for a minute and then turn it over to Chris Young to talk to you about the plan. You're very familiar with this. We were before you and obtained conditional use approval for the apartment building at this location. You've also seen the tentative sketch plan. You have approved that. And following that, we filed a preliminary plan application pursuant to the sketch plan that was approved by you. That has been reviewed, as Mr. Metrick has told you, by the Planning Commission. It's also been reviewed by the Borough Engineer as well as the Borough Zoning Officer. We've received written reviews. We've been to the Planning Commission on two occasions very recently, just one Monday. I believe they had provided you a review based upon their earlier meeting, but not yet for the most recent meeting on Monday. And what I'd like, Mr. Young, to do is just kind of give you an overview of the plan. There have been a couple of little modifications since you saw it last, and we think you'll be pleased with them. And with that, I'd like to ask Chris to talk to you a moment about the plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
When you last saw the plans, it was a two-page plan set, which was basically the existing conditions plan and then the proposed site plan. So it's now an eight-page plan set that's fully engineered with site grading, stormwater management, erosion controls, utility connections. And so we submitted those in January, as Mr. Fromholme said. Not to go over the other reviews we already had, but we also went to the Shade Tree Commission and received a favorable review from them. We did resubmit these plans to address all the letters that we had. We submitted on March 22. Obviously, that wasn't that long ago, so it hasn't been rereviewed again. But essentially, all of the items were, will comply. There is one waiver request, one new waiver request that we have, and that's for stormwater management. Essentially, the stormwater code calls for two major things, and that is rate control and volume control. Volume control is to infiltrate water into the ground. Well, that isn't always feasible. And so we did have, the geotechnical engineer went out to the site and tested some areas for infiltration as well as essentially the whole site to look for loading pressure and soils, bearing pressure for the design and found that infiltration didn't appear feasible at this site. Not because there was a specific limiting zone of groundwater or rock, but just that the soil was so dense that he would get an infiltration rate, but it was so minimal, it was negligible. So what we proposed for stormwater is a system that has some volume control and has some rate control. And rather than asking for a waiver of the volume, we're asking for a waiver of the drain time. So the code asks that it drains within 96 hours. While when the infiltration rate is so small that it's negligible, it's going to take a really long time to drain. But the volume is there. We will put an under-drain with an upturn pipe so that whenever it rains again, that water will be pushed through. There'll be some more water coming out. Hopefully, in summertime, you will get a little bit of infiltration. And we did agree, after speaking with the Borough Engineer, we do some additional infiltration tests during construction just in case we can find something a little different than we could the method now with the existing parking lot. So that's the one waiver request. There was also a special exception we said that we were going to get as we went through the review. We were at a Planning Commission meeting and discussing, saying that we were going to the zoning hearing board for that special exception. And it was found that the parking is actually permitted by right. That it was an oversight on my part that, you know, as we, as the code was amended and there were many amendments, one of those appeared to be applicable to the apartment building and right after the other amendments for location of residential buildings. That we looked at that and saw, okay, we need a special exception and didn't realize that the code section above allowed it by right. So we don't have to get that special exception approval anymore. So we're really in the preliminary plan phase now, looking for approval, and then next we come back for final just to highlight some changes between the conditional use slash tentative sketch plans and these you see here. If you remember, there was discussion about the setbacks on the southern side and on the western side. We did, the southern side remains the same. The western side, we had six feet. We now have eight feet there. So we pushed it back a little bit further. In addition, we reconfigured the parking garage underneath a little bit, whereas before, at the edge of the parking garage wall, only went as far as these indents in the building. And as we looked back through it, we said, well, you know what? If we can extend those underneath those indents, the balconies above, that we could get a few more parking spaces in the garage. We didn't need to to meet code, but that was a concern of the residents. And so we did get four additional parking spots in the basement level. In addition, we made changes to show bike parking areas and other things that were conditions of the conditional use approval. At the Planning Commission meeting in early March, I went through all of the review letters from the Borough Engineer and the Zoning Officer and the Montgomery County Planning Commission and went through how we would comply with each. And I could do that again if anyone would like, but I don't think we want to get into that specific detail here. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Or I can ask one question. If you were not to receive the waiver for stormwater infiltration, how would you solve that problem?
That's a good question. I mean, the code, the stormwater code has a, kind of like a bulleted list almost of if you have good infiltration rates, do this. If you have poor infiltration rates, do this. If you don't have infiltration, then you confirm with the Borough Engineer that you've done everything you can and you can request a waiver. So I can't really make infiltration happen where it's not feasible.
That's where I'm going. It's not that you're choosing to sort of take an easier path. This is the path, the theology of this segment. Correct, okay. Any other questions? No other questions?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Just to get the numbers right. So for parking, now you're looking at 55 spaces? Is that right?
In the garage, correct. We had 51, so now we have 55.
55, okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Yes. So in terms of the conditions, the shade tree conditions have been satisfied through the letter that I see?
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
We will comply with all of those. We have not submitted new landscape plans that show compliance yet, but we will.
Okay. And then I also see the sustainability narrative that addresses the other conditions that were?
Please, Bernard and South.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Fromholme, anything else?
No, other than Mr. Young was, he took the fall on missing the fact that the parking was permitted, that the garage entrance was permitted as a matter of right. That's something that I failed to pick up, but I appreciate it, Mr. Young. Thank you in the form of.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll move to 6A. Councilor Rickards, Finance and Administration.
So I'll start, Sean, if I can pass to you just to go over the manager update that gave the FNA meeting last week.
That they gave at the last council meeting? The management's report?
At the FNA report, you talked about the tax revenue coming in, 90% of taxes are collected at this point. Did you get those at the last meeting?
Yeah, because we meet an hour before.
Oh, we did, okay. Forget it. Okay. So then the last part of that meeting was an agreement that Sean and I would start to collect the data from the Excel sheets that we all did and try to come up with themes we've been talking about for some time, identifying buckets or priority for council to work on. So Sean aggregated both that data, and then I just kind of collected some conversations that we have all had and voiced and put them as a draft for you all to consider. This is not suggesting that these are the priorities, but just a starting point for a discussion. The second piece was we started with a document on expectations for council. We talked at FNA how it would be helpful to have almost kind of a standard operating procedure. So Sean and I met for a couple hours and sketched just kind of a linear design for us, again, just used as a basis for conversation. So this is, this is just a visual of the priorities. And, you know, because I'm an academic, I really started with the assumption that Borough Council and staff were collectively to, Borough Council and staff were collectively to represent the best interest future in people of Norbert. And in doing that, these are the three priorities that were identified from, again, with the Excel data and just kind of anecdotally. The first is that parking is a priority in our borough. The second is the Windsor Avenue project. The third is the Sabine property. The fourth is communication, which you can speak to Aaron. And through all of those lenses is a dedication to climate action. So this is just the start of a conversation of can we identify priorities for council and the office to work on in the next year.
Okay. Anyone want to jump in? I have some thoughts.
Yeah, so this is, just to clarify, one way to think about this is how our staff might use their kind of elective time, right? I mean, because 80% of the staff time is already committed to, say, ongoing
Day-to-day operations.
Work of the borough.
Yep.
But when there is, you know, a three-hour block on a Friday, this is where some of the staff time could be directed to these priorities, right? That's kind of how we're thinking of it.
So I guess my concern here is that public safety issues and concerns are not anywhere listed here. So we enacted a Uniform Property Maintenance Code, and none of these squares actually represent the idea that inspection and enforcement piece should be considered as we go forward.
Well, these are new projects, so that would fall.
Well, I see.
This was, remember.
Parking is a new project?
Well, this should be the Borough White Parking Study.
I see.
You can write Borough White Parking.
Got it, got it, got it.
So public safety is not a priority that isn't a special project. That's something that has to always happen.
I understand. Thank you. So, yeah. Thank you.
Right, okay. Any other thoughts? All right, I'll dig in. I think that we, looking at those sheets, I think there's a general consensus. We did a parking study a year and a half ago, or we got the results a year and a half ago. And we are looking forward to having the office thoughtfully come up with a new parking strategy for the borough as a whole. That is, every region has different things happening in it. There's different densities of parking. There's different needs for parking. And we, I think, are ready to move this plan forward. I'm seeing a lot of nods like yes. And we know that this is going to take a long time to do, and we hope that the office would keep us sort of in the loop at certain checkpoints to make sure that the deliverable is, you know, to our expectations politically and logistically. So then you have that. There's a little bit of that that does impact Windsor Avenue and the revisioning of Windsor Avenue. Because is there parking on Windsor Avenue? Is it one side? Is it one-way? All those things. And we had a open house, and we shared with the community some different ideas, and we got some feedback. This project is underway. And so this is something that they would be working on actively right now. Then on Sabine Avenue, there's been a lot of discussion on council, and I think less agreement between different council members, but generally recognizing this is our most valuable asset. And the questions have centered around, is the current use the best use? Is there a potential future better use? And what would it cost to get there? Who pays for it? I think that that would sort of sum it up. And I think right now, on the table with council is a request to put together a fairly straightforward, limited RFP to see who might, outside of the borough, have interest in participating with us in visioning of what that site could become. And also, not just visioning, but having some role in development and financing of that development. And depending on sort of the results of that, we would see whether this sort of dials up or dials down. Does that make sense?
That makes sense as long as we include in that the renewal of the property as it is as an option as well.
Yes.
As long as that's understood.
All of the options, all of the options are on the table. And council has a number of options. We could do nothing. We could continue on our current path. We could discover something magical and amazing. You know, but we, I think, are looking for ideas. So there's that. Communication. You know, the borough has received a lot of good feedback from citizens that we could be doing more in communication. What are the ways that we communicate? Electronic, the sign boards, newsletters, et cetera. How do we view communication? It's an entire communications plan that is time for us to look at. How do we make sure that the needs of the citizens are met? How do we make sure that when feedback comes in, that it has a place to go? We find all the black holes that exist and we address them so that we really have a very functional and operational government that, right? And this is.
And that's to the side, because that's not something where we would be allocating necessarily funds or be taking legislative action necessarily.
No. I would expect even if funds do need to be allocated, it's at a fairly limited, you know, it's not really material to the budget.
Right.
And then climate action. And, you know, you bumped it down because in some ways it influences all the others.
Yeah.
But in another is, you know, we formed an EAC. You know, do we want, as a council, to say that thinking about climate action, thinking about carbon emissions and how our planning can increase or decrease those emissions in our community, you know, affects the world at large? Is that something that we want to make a priority for this borough so that the staff knows that this is a threat they are expected to weave into everything? And we can have a discussion about that.
So I'd like to comment on that.
Because that's probably the one we've talked about the least. The other ones, I think, we've talked about a lot.
So I think we could root our discussion in the themes that are present in the comp plan around climate action. And those are provided to us. This actually were outlined for us by the EAC and presented at an infrastructure meeting. And I was going to do it as part of the infrastructure discussion, but I think this is a better time. And so those themes were, the goal was to serve, as the goals from the draft comprehensive plan are to serve as a municipal leader by adopting a framework for sustainability to conserve natural resources, build resiliency, and maintain a healthy community. Another goal would be to implement tools, strategies, and technologies to achieve carbon neutrality for all borough operations by 2050. The third goal, to apply best practices in stormwater management across all aspects of borough infrastructure, maintenance, and resident education. Fourth goal, to preserve and enhance the borough's tree canopy cover. And the fifth goal, to provide resources to encourage businesses and residents to adopt sustainable practices. And I think, I mean, I think those are from our own draft comp plan. They seem like limited and manageable. And it could be, hopefully, the world will outpace us if we're fortunate. But, you know, this is kind of, we can act upon these through these. I like the way Cindy illustrated this graphically because we're going to act upon these things through everything we do.
Do you mind sharing that statement with the council?
No, I can send it around.
Send it around, that would be great. Thanks. And then, so to Rob's point, in the 20% of the time, and I do understand the climate action portion. There are four additional products, programs, policies, process, projects that we would be asking the office to cover in that 20% time. Am I right about that? Is that what we're saying?
These are, this is what we would ask them to be doing during that.
In that 20% time?
Yeah, or 25, whatever.
Whatever it is, yeah, okay. Whatever.
Yeah. But it's not, I guess the point of saying 20% is, it is not 80% by any means, because running the borough and answering the phones and paying the vendors takes all that time.
Whoa, okay. And this is, it's our expectation that these will, this is what we're working on this year, perhaps not completed this year. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think we would want to develop a reasonable timeline. So these just aren't ideas.
Absolutely.
But that there is in fact a half and check-ins and benchmarks. But as we had talked about, you know, we were referring them as priorities or buckets.
Got it, I passed it out. Got it, enough. And that, okay.
So by, if council can agree to this, I just want to make it very clear. What we are agreeing also is that many of the other things on the list, many of them roll up into this. If you look at the, it was unwieldy, and I would say probably about half of them actually roll into these buckets, which is convenient for us. But the ones that do not are not going to have prioritization. going to have prioritization. And that one of these things is going to have to, council will say, hey, look, we got that proposal for Windsor Avenue, and we're going to do it and close it out. Or we're not going to do it and close it out. And then something else can come onto the plate. But we will have to be patient and wait and trust each other that, once that moment happens, then we can sort of decide what is the next big piece of meat to take a bite off.
Which leads us to this. So we were... I have one more question. And this is the first time we're seeing this. Is the first time the office is saying this? Am I right?
No. So actually, Sean and I met. The line over the first three buckets is the aggregate of the Excel sheets that you all sent, Sean, that he just really kind of organized into themes. And as Rob pointed out, or you pointed out with your ECC, that has to be done. Like, that's not an option.
Yeah.
It was just really trying to organize the conversation that we had a lot on what are the priorities. We've been having that since January. So it was just that, let's get something on paper to start the conversation. The next was, you know, we had had kind of multiple discussions about, oops, multiple discussions on expectations on how the council and the staff interact. And we kind of always get started on that Word document, and then we would kind of cut the conversation. So Sean and I met and just kind of talked through what would a standard operating procedure look like. And he and I worked on this, have been at any time here, and thought that perhaps presenting at least a visual of what we could expect from one another in that process would be helpful for council, for staff, and the community. So again, this is what Sean and I came up with, was vetted through Aaron, but I thought we could present and talk through. He and I ran through a couple of different scenarios. Sean and I kind of tested the waters on some stuff, but thought maybe we could do so at council or give you time, you know, some folks to run through scenarios in the head.
Yeah, I'm going to need some time just to, you know, for this to get put together. So I have to make a decision in this one.
Let's make an imaginary, let's make an imaginary discussion.
Sure.
Okay. Windsor Avenue has been redone. It's actually, the whole thing's been turned into a park. We don't have a road anymore. Everybody loves it. It's fantastic. And we moved it off of our agenda. Okay? Now, during the time that that project was wrapping up, is everyone is saying, ah, I have my thing that I want to have fill that spot. And so, you know, I get a lot of phone calls. And great, you know, you know, for example, I'm going to look here. Narberth Avenue Bridge Art, right? We're going to, we're going to put that at the top priority. And so I look at that and say, okay, maybe no. Or maybe, okay, why don't we assign that to infrastructure? Walk down. So now we're down left. Approved Committee Chair, assigned or validates. We talked about it in a workshop meeting, that the committee is going to discuss it. It seems to have political legs. If it doesn't, it's rejected. It's red on the left. If it does, what are the resources that are going to be required? What's it going to take? The manager is going to give us some feedback as well. It's going to have ongoing discussion. And then it's going to receive a recommendation to either be sort of assigned to the staff to move forward, or it's not. Again, I think the most important part here is that if an idea moves over to the red, then it is sidelined until it could be reconsidered at a future date. And I think that's one area where we've had paralysis, because we have so many things, is sort of everything all the time without a process as a group to say, okay, this one actually is not a priority for the group. That would be sort of a majority opinion. Cindy, does that make sense?
Yeah. And, you know, we put these dotted lines, because really, the idea is saying that you're using the job of the council president to vet ideas. However, if the idea is not approved, as council members, we have the right and responsibility to continue to push back and return to that idea.
Because that's politics.
Right. Well, and at every iteration...
That's governance.
It is.
It is governance. It's not politics. So at every iteration, so let's say the idea is approved, the committee chair is assigned, it's validated at a workshop meeting, it comes to committee, and the committee rejects it. And the chair still then has potentially the obligation to, via that dotted line, bring it on back. But really, I think the green is the most critical in that, okay, an idea's been assigned to a committee, and the staff initially just does some investigation of project plans. Like, what's the cursory look of? What are we looking at here? You know, one of the things that I think is important too, how can we collectively say, are there community groups, commissions, individuals that have expertise that we can utilize and invite into this process? And then with all of that information, bringing the idea to the committee in the discussion. I mean, I'm visual, so this was helpful for me, but Sean and I almost said, you could almost kind of track where an idea is moving, both with council and staff and the community.
Any other thoughts? Sort of general consensus, this makes sense. All right, let's move on.
Well, that's all we have.
All right. Well, then, what I would...
We're planning.
What I would like was to take a...
Your word.
Well, after public comment, if we could have a resolution that we all support this idea, and it's really just sort of a buy-in and a vote of confidence that we're going to give this a try. I mean, it doesn't really have too much legal binding to it, but I think that that would, that would give our office and administrative staff some confidence that we believe in, and we all individually will try to adhere to. All right. Is that all for finance and administration? All right. Counselor Trevor Moffett, you're up.
Fine. Thanks, everybody. Public safety met. Last month, we went through the matrix report, and we had a conversation regarding what was, what had been accomplished. And there's plenty that has been accomplished by our police chief and the police department regarding the recommendations thereof. There are a few fine points that we went over, and we're going to come up with a timeline. First, that discussion, we'll come up with a timeline to see what's a reasonable and rational amount of time to have the medium or tough points resolved sooner rather than later. We will meet again on April 10th at eight o'clock in the morning. And one of the conversations we're going to have is attempt to, I would like to have, there, Sean, I said it, I would like to have this conversation, regarding some of the, as the mayor's request, having some information, share a discussion regarding visitors pass or temporary passes in parking. So that's all.
Okay. Let's move to infrastructure.
Infrastructure, the infrastructure committee met last month, and we actually like to ask Mr. Metric if there's anything from that meeting salient that council that you feel needs to be presented to the full council at this moment. And after that, I have something else from the EAC.
I think that we'll, we have a, I've had a conversation with Ed Mangold, who the borough had hired to put together a bid document for roof repairs at two-on-one Sabine Avenue. I had a conversation with him today. So I think, I didn't check the schedule, but we, it may happen around the time that we have the April infrastructure committee meeting. We may have that document in our hand and for potential to move forward to bid in the first week of May.
Okay.
And the Windsor Avenue evaluation conversation that we had thought was going to happen tonight, for reasons I explained in an email to council, is going to be pushed two weeks out. And John Urd will be with you, with us to lead that conversation.
Looking forward to it.
And in response to your question, those are the only two things I have.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. The chair of the environmental advisory commission presented to the infrastructure committee at our last meeting. He presented us with this very interesting matrix that they worked out, basically summarizing the agenda ideas that they would like to work on as a commission on our behalf. And they're sort of legally mandated advisory role to the council and the other boards and commissions. These are grounded all in the themes of the draft comprehensive plan that I read earlier during Cindy's presentation. Jesse Lidle was kind enough to put those together for us. I think there's a lot to digest in this suggested agenda topics chart. Cindy Rickards has interesting thoughts about it and the way it's put together. Rob Breeley has interesting thoughts about how this is organized and integral to all the work that we're doing together. So at least, I'm sure each of you does, but I know I've had conversations with them, so you might want to chat offline another time with them to hear their ideas. So this is just something for us to weigh and consider for a while. Their main concern, the environmental advisory commission's main concern at this moment is that, is their capacity as a group of three to deal with these issues. And they have asked if they could have more members. It appears to be, they had, at their initial visit, there were fifty community members in the room. A lot of people are interested in how to support the borough in these efforts, support their neighbors in the education around sustainability, things we can do in our own yards. There's a tremendous amount of outreach and education that they can engage in in partnership with the Lower Merion Conservancy and other, other local groups. They'd like to reach out to the business community. So there's, there's work to be done that they can do that doesn't necessarily involve council action, but just things that we want to, you know, propagate good practices and ideas in the community. So generally, when we increase the size of a board or commission, we look to create odd numbers in case they need to vote on something. Currently, the commission's three. We could, we could take under consideration adding two.
Half of thirteen.
Half of thirteen. Oh, there we go.
I wanted to see what other size this was.
Has thirteen members. I mean, I would suggest, having served on a board of five, you know, that's a pretty good number for, for discussions. We see what the experience of a board of seven looks like, boards of nine. It just means that fewer people have time to share ideas with one another. So I think in response to their request, I would propose that we amend the, is it the bylaws of the ordinance that created the EAC, to add two additional, that we consider adding two additional members to that group.
I would just like to say...
Wonder if we can have a discussion about that. And that's all I have to say as the infrastructure chair. So I believe we just have a discussion about that item.
Okay.
We were very careful in selecting a three-year period with three members when we enacted that ordinance, so that we weren't exactly creating another, you know, volunteer group. And I do understand the request, and it does seem like a lot of work that is in front of them and us currently. This is a great sheet. I would, I would like to see some amount of work, some amount of connection, some amount of productivity before we move to expansion, before we move to amendment. Something. Give us something at this table to... I understand the chart.
Yeah. Okay, such as? Give us something.
Give me. I mean, I could pick something here, right? So, I mean, we're talking about climate action. Put something in front of us, right? But give us something to bite into as a group, so that we have an understanding of what direction, what on this list would they like to tackle first, how are they tackling it, and what that expansion is needed for.
Actually, I would back that up. I would want to know, how does expanding, I understand there's a lot of interested parties.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But how, in what way does expanding the group help them move these things along more quickly or more effectively? And maybe Rob's going to answer my question.
So my sense is that, that there is a resolution that was put forward, am I correct, Bob, to your committee from the EAC?
Oh, we have the Ready for One Hundred.
The Ready for One Hundred resolution has been making its way to this committee. And that would be an example, in line with Radnor and other neighboring townships, to commit to a renewable energy target over the next, say, ten, twenty years. So were we to make that, you know, a valuable resolution that we can actually act on? We need to, we need kind of manpower to measure our current energy level, so that we can compare, you know, over time. So that's just one example of where we need more volunteers to help with, say, measuring the current carbon footprint of the borough operation. And then, I know there's strength on the current EAC and stormwater, but my understanding in talking to the chair, Jesse Lidle, is that this matrix is actually set up with a sense of priority, so that the far, far left column, the first column, is the highest priority. And that's, would be higher than stormwater. Stormwater on its own could consume the three-member council
For ten years.
For years, and years, and years.
Yeah.
And so when would we get to greening the borough buildings or the climate action plan? So Soul Smart is another example. And these are in the first column, first priority.
Then I want to go back to the chart that was presented that said it's going to be in every decision that we're going to make, which was the chart that was just presented that said climate action. So I'm not arguing that they might need help. We have other boards and commissions who ask for the public's help. We know that in tackling their test, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, I'm bringing it to the point that we were very specific in limiting it and limiting the time to gauge success. And that's why it was set up that way. And that I would like to see something from them before we go to expansion and have to change the ordinance.
You would help me, is I would be interested in seeing two things. By virtue of geography, I'd be interested in how many people Lower Merion has on their EAC. And besides that, the second thing I would want to know is, let's just look at some similar, similar, I can't do it today. I used it ten times today. But let's look at boroughs of similar size and population to have EACs and just get a flavor. It would help me, I'd just be interested to know what the norm is.
Well, hold on to that, because I think Cindy's going to give you an answer. But again, I would, I would ask Rob, and I'm not, you know, I'm asking this because I'm really, I want to know, is with so many really interested people, why is it necessary that they sort of be a member of the EAC to move forward, say, example, you know, moving forward composting education? I mean, someone is going, that's going to be their issue that they really care about. They're going to work with Jesse and the team, they're going to get some support and some liaison through the borough. They're going to come to Narberth Day. They're going to go to people's houses. They're going to help them set up compost bins. But do they need to be a board member to do that?
I would say yes, because my sense is, in the current composition, there's more strength in stormwater than some of these other areas. So as a three-member group, if they're to vote on their priorities, they could be voting on stormwater, even if there are higher priority items.
See, the strength, when you say strength, you don't mean the skill side?
Like professional skills.
The preference?
Professional skills. And stormwater is also mandated, right, through, you know, so stormwater has to be done. But I see difficulty in reaching for these higher priority items without a larger body.
Lower Merion has seven.
They have seven.
Goodness, Jack, Swatmore has seven as well.
Swatmore.
Swatmore's a simpler size.
Have her for thirteen.
Have her for, which, because Have her for...
Have her for ten.
Township. Yes, thirteen.
So, I mean, I, for my own point, I was, I've heard Jesse's presentation. It's wonderful. This is wonderful organization. I mean, I think it's already wonderful work that they've done to create these five buckets and priorities. I'm fine saying, let's table this. I'd be fine, I mean, I'd be fine even, I'd be fine saying, let's table this if we can ask for something specific from the EAC to come back to us with, to help us make a decision about whether to expand the board. I also don't see a downside of expanding the board. I feel like we set it up, you know, it was the first time we've done it, and couldn't really know what the sweet spot number is. I, I got the sense, I did ask, I asked him at the meeting, because he didn't ask for an expansion. I said, it sounds like possibly it would be, you know, do you have a lot of work? Would it make sense to expand the board? And, you know, he, he expressed interest in that. And he, I don't think he wanted to demand that, but it was kind of clear that's, I think that that's where he was going. Looking at this, I see five buckets. And there's some logic to saying, if there were five members on board, one, you know, each member could have their own specific area that they managed, you know, and brought in volunteers from the community, but they would have one area of focus that was, that was sort of that they owned. We would know who was the person. As we were moving through our projects, you know, if there's a, if there's sort of a waste stream and diversion issue that seems to present itself as we're moving through, we'd have one, one point of contact on the EAC, who was sort of their, their lead on that. So it seems to me there's a certain logic in having five to meet the five areas that they've already identified.
And then next year, there's seven. So then, do we go to seven? Like, what I'm saying is, like, you know, we have the resources of volunteers, and so I'd like to see some action that way first. And although, I agree with your point.
So I think it would be fine.
It would be fine if we can ask, if we can ask the EAC for something specific that might help us to make that decision. I'm fine with tableting it temporarily. But I generally felt already kind of convinced by what Jesse had presented, that I felt like an expansion was probably warranted, a modest expansion.
So when I proposed we create the EAC last summer, I was adamant that we only have three members. And for the, for the reasons that Gigi articulated. And, and I felt that, you know, until we see, because I felt that everything we do in the borough really is underpinned by common sense approach to environmental and sustainable advocacy. The, now that we, and I also felt that it was really important that we, that we appoint the council, appoint the chair, not the group itself, appoint the chair. Never anticipated that they would come out of the gate with so much thrust and as well organized and on point with as many project ideas as they have. We have also intentionally downsized the planning commission, because the planning commission came through a heavy lift from 2012 onward. They no longer need seven members, so we're downsizing to five. We're on our way down now to five. And I think we've all discussed that, and so the general consensus that it was too large a group, and now it's time for it to be smaller. So it could be that there's a time and place for different sized groups at different times. So there's no sort of net increase happening in terms of, I mean, if we want to think about it that way. I agree with Michelle that if we can think of a specific, and I think we should drill down into what is the specific cask, we should ask of the EAC, have them do that. But let's, what's the specific, though? Like, what's a for instance? Because I think, I think that's a big call.
I think it goes back to our project issue where there's a lot... I think it goes back to our project issue where there's a lot of projects that maybe not so much time to do all of them, and, and, you know, we've suffered from that clearly. And that, I think they have to prioritize and, and work with us in saying that these are the pieces, I mean, we talked about Windsor Avenue, and we know what pieces are involved there, and I'm sure they have thoughts and ideas regarding that. And each one of these buckets certainly could be addressed in that project alone, and I think some of them were addressed, in your Mr. Metrics of presentation, or the presentation. And, but, but that's how I see it. I see it as applying their skills and applying these ideas and values to the projects that we are putting forward.
So I have an idea, I have an idea of a specific we could ask them to look at. In the, in the current review letter of the Havreford Avenue projects that are coming up, the County Planning Commission has some pretty clear recommendations around stormwater management.
Conservancy.
No, the Commission, Montgomery County Commission, has clear, made clear, their planner made clear recommendations around stormwater management.
The letter from the Conservancy saying the same thing, sorry.
Conservancy's not a legal official body that has, I mean, the county actually, the county, I mean, the Conservancy may support the idea, but it's the county planner, it was Maggie Dobbs that wrote the letter that I got. So, and she, so, why don't we ask them to look at that letter, look at that recommendation, and make sense of it for Narborough? And, and they could consult, we could, then, they could consult with the Conservancy if indeed, you know, that would be a good use. So that the, we're not asking our, our staff and manager of time to, or having council members need to do that. They can come back to us with a coherent idea and recommendation. I, you know, I observed that tonight, we have a developer requesting a waiver, a waiver around their inability to recapture, recharge stormwater in the way that, that they're being required to by our zoning ordinance. Well, perhaps that's an opportunity for the council to be advised by the EAC, like, oh, if you want to grant, oh, if, if you want to, no, by the EAC, if the EAC might say, well, if you want to grant them that waiver, maybe you ought to find another way to capture that stormwater somewhere else in the borough, or, you know, maybe there's some way in which the EAC could help us think about how to grant that waiver, for example.
Right. Maybe there are ways that you would actually ask for assistance in that offset capture.
Right.
As part of the waiver. And I think the EAC would be-
Our, our staff may also have ideas about it. But anyway, I think that there's a specific for me.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So, that, that would be reasonable. But I think it's also reasonable to ask for a first priority item, because stormwater is not the first priority item in this matrix, although it is legally mandated.
Oh, okay.
And so a first priority item would be the climate action planning or the energy consumption by the borough buildings. And so I think it would be reasonable, if we're going to go back and ask for specific recommendations or a specific picture of why the council should be expanded, I think we should ask for a first priority item to be addressed.
What about streetlights?
Street, well, streetlights has already been processed.
Two things. One, one is just, what are we looking for the EAC to do? We have people with really amazing professional experience on the EAC, and actually people who want to become on the EAC. And we have an opportunity to have them do real heavy lifts, using their professional knowledge to basically benefit the borough, because we don't have to pay consultants tens of thousands of dollars to do the same work. So there's that. We have them attending meetings on all different topics, and just sort of keeping their finger on the pulse of the environmental impact and reporting back and making recommendations. And sometimes it's formal in a letter, and sometimes it's informal, just in the conversation of coming to a meeting and part of public comment, et cetera. And then you have a lot of things in here that are sort of projects. And I would suggest that the EAC come back to us with a prioritization that minimizes the need for borough staff resources. What can they do that they can actually get done, so that we don't come back and start arguing about this again?
Right.
How can we, you know, how can we make the puzzle pieces fit together in the best way? That's my thinking. I, I know the climate action and energy is at the top of this list. The reality is, right now, at this very moment in time, stormwater is something we're going to have to spend a lot of money on. It is legally mandated.
And the clock is ticking.
We have experts on the EAC who have experience in stormwater. To me, that's the priority.
Yes.
I'm one of seven. But I, I feel like, I would be more concerned if it was the last one, but it's not, it's only number two, and maybe sort of we could focus on one, and that could help us significantly. Especially in terms of our MS4 compliance. We hired a consultant, I have every confidence in them, but these are fairly perfunctory reports that you write, and I know there are more creative solutions that will save money and improve our performance. And that's what I'm looking for the EAC to be able to do.
I mean, we could just ask them to drill down on the whole column. Just, there's four, there's five items there.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Yeah.
And tackle that.
Yeah. I mean, we could.
I'm, I'm, and maybe to be fair, I don't know that I represented as well Jesse's requests, but, so I apologize, Jesse, if I didn't. But I, I hear your concern, Gigi. I'd like your, I'd like their suggestion that we ask them to prioritize that minimizes the need for staff resources.
I think it's good. And I, sorry, go ahead.
Cindy.
I'm sorry. So I just pulled up the minutes from Lower Marion, just to see what their EAC does. And they have a really robust minutes, but their last point is assignment to public meetings. So it looks as if someone from an EAC representative goes to every single meeting. And that, if that's what we want to do, then I do think that makes case for adding two different, so perhaps we need to think, would it be helpful to have an EAC representative come to every committee meeting? And if so, then perhaps that does make sense.
I think this is, this has been a good discussion. I mean, my takeaway is, I'd like to sit down with Mr. Leidl.
Right, right.
And sort of, did you watch the meeting? Are you watching, Jesse? Let's, let's, this is a conversation.
Yeah, I think so.
We've laid out a lot of ideas, and we can bring this up again at the, at the next one.
That would be great.
I like it.
Thank you all so much for that discussion.
I like the chart.
All right, is that all you have, Bob?
That's all I have for now. I think, I, we're, Rob mentioned the Ready for 100 that they presented to the Infrastructure Committee. We will distribute it to the rest of council and consider for, you know, I think we should consider a motion for that.
Okay. And, actually, while we're still talking about environmental issues, we did get a number of emails from Amy Tokowski Feldman about the, whether we want to endorse the Energy Innovation Act. Now, that everybody, all right, I'm going to forward this to everybody, and you'll have a chance to review it, and we'll talk about it in two weeks.
Thank you.
This is something in Congress, and they're looking to get local municipalities on board. And there we go. All right. We'll move to public comment, number seven. Anyone in the public who would like to make a comment? Now is your opportunity for, on any topic. Just ask if you stand, please, if you can, and state your name and address. I'll start on the left.
Hi, Mona Albach, 109 Conway Ave. I, first of all, thank you for all of your service to the borough and all the voluntary work you do for us. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but when I heard the 114th Forest of developer asked for the stormwater waiver, that really concerned me. Because as you've mentioned, we, we're already under state mandate to reduce our stormwater pollution to the tune of way up, way above $600-plus thousand dollars. We have a flooding problem, and according to some neighbors, we have, people have talked about cars being ruined because of the flooding. I know I used to be in the flood zone, and I used to have to pay thousands of extra dollars on my flood insurance, on flood insurance, and fortunately, I'm not in it anymore, but I know there's a lot of residents in the borough who are in the flood zone. So for me, it was really concerning to hear the developers' representatives say that there were no other alternatives to what they could do to remediate the stormwater. To me, that seems very disingenuous. I think there are things they can do, they just might not be interested in doing them. So, I, I, let me think. Just, you know, as someone who's trying to learn pretty quickly about stormwater management, I think some things they could do, they could use permeable asphalt in the parking spaces, they could use green roofs, they could plant storm trees in addition to shade trees, they could have rain gardens on the property, they could use more green space and permeable space. So, I think there's a lot of things that they can do, so I, I'm not sure why they said they weren't, they didn't know what else they could do. So, I think it's really important, in the light of new development, now that we've been mandated to reduce our stormwater pollution, I think, you know, I'm very glad that there's, I know there's a lot of council members who are very dedicated to climate action, and I would ask that we are as dedicated to clean water, which is another issue that affects us all. I think the new development will put more strain, you know, more people living here will put more strains on our sewers, more strains on stormwater pollution. So I would just, I guess, respectfully ask that, that, you know, in, in, in new development, I think that they should have to be, you know, their stormwater management should be as good or better than the prior property. And there are ways to achieve that and ways to do that. So I'm just respectfully going to urge that we really consider not granting that waiver and making them think hard about how they can, about all the options in front of them to, to deal with the stormwater. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Fien, and I own four buildings between 104 and One Way Forest Avenue. I just wanted to reach out to you guys while you're going through the development process and approvals, to speak on behalf of our tenants. We have a two-story office building and four storefronts, which obviously will be significantly affected by all three developments potentially coming down the line. We're adjacent to our property on all three sides. So whatever we can do to limit the negative effect on those businesses, there's probably, I think roughly 20 different small businesses in that little area. So little things like, make sure the contractors are parking offsite, you know, maybe they somehow find a place to go and bring them back in. Dumpsters are kept on the property instead of blocking parking spots on the street. That they never block both ends of Forest Ave. I mean, we have chiropractor, podiatrist, Danny's Guitar Shop, all these people need their customers and clients to be able to have access to the property. During all that infrastructure work, a lot of the tenants told me their customers couldn't reach them because it was so blocked up all over the place. So, but there'd be communication between the developers, if they're all going to go at the same time, that, all right, today, you know, we're going to work at this end of Forest, we'll keep this end open, maybe have some signs saying, all right, businesses are still open on Forest, just go to, you know, Windsor or go to, you know, Havreford to get to those businesses. Deliveries, first thing in the morning, you know, before, you know, the businesses start getting busy, little things like that. Yeah, so just if you guys could just remember all these little things, especially because it's really going to hammer away at, you know, these small businesses. And most of these businesses are your neighbors who live in Narborough, and we all want to support them. You know, obviously, everyone comes out and supports them, so whatever you guys can do to limit the negative effects on those businesses, we would appreciate it.
One of those businesses, I thank you.
John, if you could send a summary of those ideas in writing to the Borough Office-
Sure.
And they would be, it could be forwarded to council members, that would really be helpful for us to keep it all in, in mind during this process.
Great.
Thank you. Ed Ridgeway, yes?
Go first. Okay.
Hi, Laura Kelly, 35 North Narborough Avenue, The Handwork Studio. I'm here to ask a question about the bridge, wondering if you know when that inspection date is going to take place? I understand it's to take place in April. And if you have what that date will be?
I don't have a date yet. I spoke to the, I spoke to the person at PennDOT who manages those inspections, they don't have a date yet either.
Okay. And so, Mr. Ridgeway will speak a little bit about the Narborough Business Association meeting that took place, very robust meeting this morning, which was great. However, I think we're just sort of waiting to hear what the results of that are going to be. In the interim, we do have some concerns about the look of the location there, if there are ways that we can make it look a little less dangerous to be in the area, understanding that we want to prevent cars from going up there, but not want to scare off people from still visiting the businesses that are along that way. So, really looking for some guidance as to how to go about making some of those suggestions, and if you'd be even open to those ideas.
Thank you. I can see this being connected to communication, how we communicate to the public, how we communicate to the businesses, in the, in the local disclosure. So, I'll assign that. Mr. Ridgeway?
Like Ms. Kelly was saying, we had a business association meeting this morning, and had a pretty good turnout, had a number of, number of different types of businesses, but a lot of them were in the downtown, either retail businesses, services businesses, or in the case of Mr. Phelan, a commercial property owner whose tenants are retail businesses, including Danny's Guitars, The Tickles, chiropractor, Spots, you know, that's, that stretch of businesses there. And I, I would say that the general mood this morning was one of concern. Concern that, you know, the last couple of years with the Pico gas line replacement projects were a challenge, and we're seeing a number of challenges coming ahead. And, so we've started talking about how we think we can address them, and, and we plan to have a conversation with some specifics with council about how we could cooperate together to address these things. And, you know, specifically, the, you know, the kind of perfect storm of challenges that we already are experiencing a little bit of right now, the bridge has been shut for a month now. There are businesses on the hill, you know, one in particular that says business just dropped off completely. There's a business on Havreford Avenue that serves breakfast food that says they've lost all of their morning business. You know, it's virtually nothing now. And, you know, that is, you know, kind of a precursor of, you know, some more difficult times coming up, I believe. We've got the bridge closed, and that is causing, you know, not only it's making it impossible for people from the south side to cross the bridge, but it's also causing backups at rush hour in this, in the particular this morning traffic. You know, the traffic that backs up on the end of Havreford, now with the traffic light on the other side of the train tunnel, you know, it's making it less appealing for people to come into Narborough. So that's a challenge we're facing right now. And what we're looking at is, we, you know, the bridge may or may not open temporarily until the project starts next year, the, hopefully, the 2020 project, which, you know, we're looking at, you know, I've heard anywhere from 11 to 14 months of closure, so a year of closure there, which may have started. We don't know if it's started now or not. So, but throwing that, plus three big construction projects on one block, which may or may not be going on simultaneously. So, you know, we recognize that, you know, we can't change the fact that these things are happening, but we want to have a plan and be proactive ahead of time. And so we've started to talk about things that we want to communicate with you. Right now, one of the things that Laura was talking about is the fact that right now it looks, and I realize this is an emergency closure, but right now it kind of looks like a giant danger-do-not-enter sign. You know, and that's like the gateway to, the gateway to our town right there. So, if this is going to go on for an extended period of time, I think that bridge needs to look, you know, less imposing for, you know, pedestrian traffic at least. And we can do, we can figure out a better way, better signage and better communication with people as to exactly what's going on. Because I think right now there's a lot of what's happening with the bridge and where is that going to go? I know we don't have those answers, but, you know, some of this stuff is going to become more defined as it goes on. And, you know, that was, that was, was Laura's point about right now, what that looks like right now. But, you know, to the, the larger, the bigger issue, you know, her business on the hill experienced, you know, some serious income loss during the last closure. So, you know, we want to support, you know, that part of our downtown. You know, and Mr. Phelan was talking earlier about, you know, during the construction, how can we, you know, how can we work with these developers so that they understand, you know, we need them to support us at the same time that we're supporting them? We need their help to make it, you know, to make it viable and keep, it's going to be an active business district while those construction projects are going on. And, you know, there was discussion about, you know, the 20 years ago, the, the downtown revival when the sidewalks were all up, you know, one of our members, you know, cited four businesses that went under during that two-year project. that went under during that two-year project, that, and, you know, none of us want to see that, you know, so, the, in summary, we're talking about things that we would like to work with you on, we don't have all our specifics yet, but for right now, you know, some of the things we were talking about are some good signage and some good communication with people, so they understand, you know, what the current situation is, and, you know, how it's changing along the way. You know, one of the challenges with the gas project is, we couldn't keep up with what roads were closing and what roads were open, and, you know, it's a guessing game, people playing Frogger all, you know, all day, trying to get through the borough, so, you know, since, you know, we're starting to see the challenges now, and the bigger challenges are coming, we just want to stay ahead of it. And I would say that was the mood of the room this morning.
As you heard, one of our priorities is communication, and we're looking to continue to improve there, that means we're hoping to communicate better with you, but it also means if we're not, let me hear about it. And I think you're seeing a lot of nods here at the council table, and I think also nods in the administration. There's a lot of places balls can get dropped, we're interested in fixing that. And we are looking for ideas to come from the business community, because you know your business's best, and I think we could spend a lot of hours, come up with a plan, it could do you no good at all.
Absolutely.
We're looking to you, we've heard one message, and, you know, hopefully, you can send us some more, as the ideas coalesce in your mind. It is a concern, we recognize, while the borough government operates on a timeframe of years and decades, businesses operate month to month, and if you don't have any dollars coming in, it doesn't take very long before you're not a going concern, so, we hear you. And hopefully, we can get a date very soon and give you some certainty, at least, to know when you'll have some information. Anyone else? All right, I'll close public comment, I'll move to 8A. Councilor Tevland-Moffatt, could you make a motion?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-008, an appointment of Narborough Borough Fire Marshal. This is, the appointment would go to William R. Henderson, who's currently taking care of part of that role, and I'm going to kick this over to Mr. Metrich to explain why we have to reiterate this.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Metrich.
Yeah, this, this resolution is to clarify the fire marshal's authority under the current borough ordinances and code. Included in the resolution is a letter from the fire chief, delegating authority of the fire marshal to Mr. Henderson. Together with the resolution, it clarifies that what exactly Mr. Henderson's role would be in the review of the land developments that are before us. Mr. Henderson has had those plans for several months now, and we want to make sure that any suggestions or findings he has are defensible, should they be questioned by the persons receiving those requidations. So, this is a resolution to clarify Mr. Henderson's status.
Any questions?
Maybe I should also explain, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
That with the adoption of the Uniform Construction Code last, at the end of last year, there is another official in the borough called Fire Code Official, and that person is Kevin, currently Kevin Walsh, and he is also our Building Code Official, so, things like inspecting how a sprinkler system is configured in a new, in a new building, verifying that the widths of stairways are appropriately sized for egress, according to the Fire Code, all those kinds of stipulations and rules, Kevin is going to manage, and Kevin is also going to be the person in charge of conducting any inspections that come up, and also, when we, when we evolve into a routine inspection program, Kevin will be that person doing that. The fire marshal is going to have roles, role in the borough to do post-fire scene investigations, and whatever else the fire chief assigns to that person in that role, as well as what we're asking of the fire marshal with this resolution, which is to comment on any land developments that we should receive in the future.
Thank you. Overall, structurally, this is a vast improvement from where the borough was, you know, 18 months ago.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion for what I'll call support of our current priorities, as listed in what I've labeled Exhibit A, and how we work together as listed in Exhibit B? Which for the handouts that's in here.
So, move down, I'll move that we, that we resolve to prioritize as proposed in Exhibit A, and organize our decision-making process as illustrated in Exhibit B.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion from our previous discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, none, thank you. I will support a motion under 8C, that is not on the agenda, it will be a motion to wish happy birthday to Michelle.
Nice.
It wasn't on the table, but it seems like it was. Happy birthday, Michelle. And I'll go to our borough manager for nine, you have some announcements.
Yeah, I have a couple announcements to share with the borough and the public. It's a bittersweet week for us in the office. We said goodbye to one of the most capable administrative assistants I've ever had the pleasure of working with, that's Christina Mead. She was with us on a full-time basis, temporarily filling in for our permanent office manager, Michelle Carroll, and it was sad to see Christina go, she did such a wonderful job, we'll miss her sense of humor. She also had the amazing ability to conduct a phone conversation in the office at such a low amount of decibels, that I wasn't even sure she was on the phone. So, there was a lot of times I would reach over and talk to her, and interrupt her while she was in the middle of a phone call, but if any of you talked to Christine on the phone, she's very soft-spoken, but very professional, extremely good employee, she left us on the best of terms, and we're going to miss her. We're also very happy to have Michelle Carroll back, who, as well as a talented employee, and he's happy to be back, and we're happy to have her, so.
Great.
You can all stop in and say hi to Michelle. Secondly, I also have a, I have another announcement. If you heard the earthquake that happened, the tectonic plate that moved in the office recently was a result of the announcement of retirement of one of the borough's longest-term employees, and I'm not sure if it's, if I could say ever, but, yeah, if I spent the time looking through the records, I doubt there's someone who has worked here longer than Charlie Bowe.
Oh.
And I will use Charlie's words to describe to me in this really, really thoughtful, brief but thoughtful letter he said to me, says, Sean, I'm very excited about my impending retirement, but I wanted to take the time to thank the borough of Narborough for the 32 years of opportunity that this job has provided to me and my family. I've enjoyed the work that I've done with the borough, and the coworkers with whom I have shared my time. It has been a privilege to serve my community, the community that I grew up in and raised my family. And there's a few more paragraphs in here, but I thought that was just such a from-the-heart thing to get from somebody. I also have Charlie Bowe's employment application there. Charlie applied for the job of a Highway Department Laborer in November 19th of 1985. I was 14 years old at the time, and at Strathhaven High School, so that was a lifetime ago. Charlie Bowe was hired in February 18th of 1986 in the Highway Department, signed by William Martin, he's a Lower Marion High School graduate, and we're really lucky to have Charlie be a part of our team. Charlie has, in addition to being a borough employee for 30, almost 30, yeah, 33 years, he's also been a volunteer with the Narborough Fire Company since 1979, and we are going to be celebrating Charlie, and Charlie's work with the borough in an informal, out-on-the-field little barbecue the week of April 29th to May 3rd, date TBD. Council members are invited, we will put some burgers on the grill, and we will have a good time, so, I just wanted to share all that news with you today.
Thank you to Charlie.
Okay, any other announcements?
I don't know.
Yes, Ms. Metrich.
All this talk of environmental stewardship reminded me that the ordinance I signed on October 17th for regulating single-use plastics and plastic straws will, has had a soft opening the last six months, but will officially be enforced and in, in effect on April 17th. So, just giving the heads-up to businesses who use single-use plastics and plastic straws, that the law will be in hard effect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
A motion.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.